Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. And without objection, I will call this meeting into order. Next order of business here is a little bit of a few introductions. I'm going to start on this side of me, to my right, your left. We have William Eisenhower, our board attorney. We have Melanie Freeman, one of our board members. Pam Escobar, another one of our board members. Over on this side, I've got Dr. John Kopicki, our school superintendent. Sam Treadaway, board member. Board member Kat Bonds-Moore. Board member Shannon Treadaway. And our Teacher of the Year, Madison Little. And I also would like to recognize our deputy, SRO tonight is Deputy Jennifer Burnett. She is our SRO at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. And with that, if you would all please join me, if you're able, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business is adopting an agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Seven.
And a second. So we've got a motion by Mr. Treadaway and a second by Ms. Lancaster. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the next item on the agenda is Superintendent Comments. Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. And there is no board chair tonight. You may have noticed, I'm not Rob Walter, I'm Greg Mills. I'm the vice chair. I'm sitting in for him tonight. And I just wanted to use this time, very briefly, because I know when I started going to school board meetings, it wasn't readily apparent how all of this stuff is set up, how all this stuff operates. So I just want to take a few minutes to sort of describe that process, so that everybody, whether you're watching on YouTube, I know most people in this room are aware of how it works. But typically what happens is our professional staff will decide what needs to come before the board for some kind of deliberation or decision, and they will put that into an agenda. We will have an agenda-setting meeting about a week before this work session. So the first Monday of the month is the work session. Second Monday of the month is the business session. And the Tuesday before the work session was when we had our agenda-setting meeting for tonight's meeting. And at that meeting was Rob Walter and myself. Pam Escobar also attended that meeting and provided some valuable input. Dr. Kopicki is there, and our lawyer is usually there, along with our board clerk. And we look at that agenda, we ask some questions about it, and then that night, that agenda goes to the full board. The full board gets a chance to look at what we will be considering at that upcoming meeting. And then on Thursday, that meeting has to be publicly noticed by law. And so on Thursday, that will go out on all of our social media channels, and that will go out to all the local media. And it becomes available on the school district's website at Board Docs. So if you've heard us talk about Board Docs, that is a platform that we put all of our meeting notes on. So you can go to cabarrus.k-12.nc.us, look for the school board link, and then on that page, find the button for Board Docs. You'll be able to see everything that we're looking at in front of us tonight. That's all the things on the agenda, and all of the attachments that relate to those decisions. So as we go through this agenda tonight, the work session typically is not a session where we have any votes. Our staff will come to us, and they will make presentations, and we will ask some questions. And this works a little bit different from district to district. You may notice, if you watch other school districts, they may have a dozen committee meetings during the month. Really, what we have here is one meeting, where everybody brings all that stuff to us at one time, and the board gets to deliberate on it, and you get to see it all at one time, rather than a bunch of... We have a few committees, but rather than having a bunch of small committees, like some districts do, we do a work session and then a business session. So tonight, we'll look at each of these items, and some of those items will need to come up for a vote, but they won't come up for a vote tonight. They'll come up for a vote at the business session. So we will decide whether we want to put that on the consent agenda or on the action agenda. All the things that are on the consent agenda, we're all kind of agreeing that we're probably going to approve those things, and we're just going to package them up at one time and have one vote to pass those. Other items, maybe there are a few outstanding questions or need a little bit more deliberation, or maybe we want to allow the public to have some time to speak to that issue, and so that will go on the action agenda. And then we have a week, and you can use that week to take all this information that you've heard from this meeting, and you can send email, you can make calls, or you can plan to speak at the business session. If you want to speak at the business session, you'll need to send an email to our board clerk by noon on that Monday. You'll need to get that request in by noon on Monday, if you want to speak. And you'll get three minutes to speak. And all the speakers will be heard before any votes are cast, and then at the business meeting, we will go through all of that. We will cast our individual votes, and the process will start all over again the next month. So that's my beginner's guide to the way the school system, the school board operates. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Kopicki for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Good evening. This week is National School Psychologist Week, and I'd like to celebrate the essential role our school psychologists play in helping our students learn, feel safe, and thrive. These professionals support academic achievement, mental health, and positive school climate by partnering with our teachers, our families, and our community agencies to provide data-driven interventions and wraparound care. From MTSS and crisis response through counseling and consultation, their work reaches every classroom and every child. On behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you to all of our psychologists for your expertise, your compassion, and your unwavering commitment to our system's mission, and mostly to our children. Reminder to everyone that tomorrow is November 4th. It is the election day for the municipalities across Cabarrus County. Many of our schools serve as voting precincts, and we're proud to support this vital part of our democracy by opening our doors to our voters. As a reminder, tomorrow is also a teacher workday for all traditional Cabarrus County schools. Students will not be in classes. Early colleges will operate on a normal schedule, and I encourage all of our families, staff, and community members to make your high school civic teachers proud and take time to exercise your right to vote. Participating in local elections is one of the most meaningful ways we can shape the future of our communities and support the values that guide us forward. And on November 8th, it is National STEM Day, which will be this Saturday, and we will join schools across the nation in celebrating the National STEM Day, a day that highlights the power of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics to inspire innovation and shape the future. Cabarrus County Schools has built one of North Carolina's only comprehensive K-12 STEM pipelines, connecting elementary, middle, and high schools through a cohesive system of inquiry, design, and real-world problem solving. This intentional approach ensures that students develop the skills, creativity, and curiosity needed to learn in a rapidly changing world. We are proud that eight of our schools have earned STEM School of Distinction and are recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Construction as such. These schools are Coltrane Webb STEM Elementary, Patriots STEM Elementary, R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary, C.C. Griffin STEM Middle School, J.N. Freeze STEM Middle School, Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School, Central Cabarrus High School, and Northwest Cabarrus High School. On National STEM Day, we will celebrate our students, educators, and community partners who make hands-on learning and innovation part of everyday life in Cabarrus County schools. Together, we are preparing the next generation of problem solvers, creators, and leaders. And then finally, a reminder to our community that on November 12th at 6:00 PM, Cabarrus County Schools will host the second of two community meetings as part of the stakeholder engagement process for the Coltrane Webb STEB Elementary Attendance Boundary Project. This meeting will be held in the gym at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. We welcome your input and your attendance at that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Dr. Kopicki. Next, we'll move to the reports section of our meeting tonight. The 4.1 is, I'm sorry, 5.1 is the committee reports from board members. Do any board members have any updates from your committees for this month? Yes, Pam?
Good evening. Tonight, the interns met prior to this meeting today, and we are starting to work on our community service project. I want to say thank you to Doug Carr, one of our social workers, who is active in our schools, to give an overview of the work that they do and some ideas for the possibilities for our interns. Because there's needs in our community right now, usually we wait until the spring, but I will keep you guys up to date, but we might be doing something in the next month, once we get some more details this week. So I'll just keep you all up to date on that. But I will just say this, every time I meet with them, I'm super impressed by their intelligence, their eagerness, just their whole attitude towards giving back and being leaders in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar. Anybody else? Ms. Lancaster?
I just want to report from the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. Their grant application is open right now. I know the deadline's coming up soon, so if you're a teacher and you're listening to this, you might want to go to that website tonight and look for that deadline. I know when I taught, I received some of these grants, and they do help with classroom projects. So if you are interested in getting a grant, go to that website tonight, because I'm pretty sure the deadline is this week. And also, last Thursday was the luncheon. It was nice to see the community and businesses come together to support the education here at Cabarrus County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Ms. Moore?
Yes, I also attended the Education Foundation Luncheon, and it was a nice event, and it is good to meet with our community leaders and realize that they do care and support our schools. Last month, I also attended the Student Health Advisory Council. I always enjoy this committee, because they start with an activity that you can actually use with kids and getting them up in movement, about a 10-minute activity, just to help children take a brain break from the class, from the academics. Jessica Grant from the Health Alliance did a presentation and went over the Community Health Needs Assessment and the four top priority issues, and how it related back to our schools. I believe she's going to do that presentation for our social workers, too. A lot of good information. Also, just want to mention the Future Fairs. I had never been before. I was amazed at the number of families that came out that night. I enjoyed walking around. There was programs that I didn't even know we had, but the best part of that night was seeing children and parents happy, excited. So I just want to say thank you to the staff of all the schools and the programs, and here at the office, just because it took a lot of work, and it was really nice displays, and all the schools were doing their little cheerleading, and it was just, again, it just gave me a good feeling to see kids excited.
Anyone else? All right, thank you for those reports. And at this point, we'll move to item 5.02, which is our monthly budget summary. And Mr. Philip Penn, our CFO, is coming to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Kopicki, board members. I know most of you got a chance to hear this at the Finance Committee meeting last Thursday, so I'll be brief on the introductory comments. This material's been up for a bit, both in advance of that meeting and this one tonight. So despite the fact that we don't have a state budget yet for the '25-'26 year, we're still in, I would call it, stable financial position at this point. There is some trepidation around not knowing the final outcome on half-year budget, as we enter the fifth month of the fiscal year, but that's kind of where we are, as is everybody else in the state of Connecticut, upstate state of Connecticut, state of North Carolina right now. We did have enough set aside in some of our discretionary funds to offset we have a known negative variance in transportation, and now that transportation leadership is working aggressively to reduce that amount. And if you recall, that was due to a change in the way that the state calculated the reimbursement to the district for our transportation costs. They're still using '23-'24 data instead of '24-'25 data. And I would say we're continuing to watch the areas of the budget that continue to have the highest degree of volatility. These are universal. Connecticut had them, we had them here. You know, it's expenditures on exceptional children, expenditures for legal services, unplanned significant building or grounds maintenance. These are the things that pop up when you operate a district of this size that you can't always plan for as you get into the beginning of the year. But overall, from an expense standpoint, I'd say we're in good shape. You know, we do monitor revenues, obviously, very closely as well, and I would say that we, a good note, we've collected about $285,000 over the first three months of the year in our fines and forfeitures. As you may recall, last year, fines and forfeitures were substantially below what we had budgeted. We intentionally budgeted conservatively for '25-'26. We're operating right now on a run rate of about $95,000 a month, and that compares to a budget of around $73,000. So to the extent that continues to come in, it'll continue to benefit us. We are watching Medicaid reimbursements fairly closely. You know, they are saying that the smallest piece of our Medicaid reimbursement, which was the fee for services, may be delayed up to 10 days more than what's normal. But our Medicaid consultant is also commenting that the biggest piece of what we claim for Medicaid, or quarterly and annual administrative claiming, really should not be impacted by the shutdown. Despite that, we're continuing to be owed about $2 million by Medicaid in terms of reimbursements that date back to the '23-'24 fiscal year. We have in the budget $950,000 in unrestricted Medicaid funds, so we're certainly hopeful we see at least some of that roll in by the end of December, as we're told it's going to, with usually the biggest piece drops in the month of June or early in the month of July. So, you know, we continue to wait to see what that is, and unfortunately, there's nothing that we can do from our end to expedite that process. You've got the two exhibits in front of you, the budget summary that looks at it by fund, with the beginning and balance of the budget, any amendments that we've made, and what they'll talk about, amendments in the next agenda item, year-to-date expenses, any kind of POs that are outstanding right now, and you'll see most of the POs are linked to our capital for our school construction, and then the undercurrent balance for what's left. And, you know, you usually take as a proxy how close are we to the percentage of the year that we've gone to at this point versus the percentage of the budget that we've gone through at this point, with some notable exceptions around capital. And the final exhibit in this piece, just if you keep going down, it talks about same type of information, but also broken out by purpose code, the 5,000 series through the 9,000 series. But as I said, from an expense standpoint, we're tracking just about spot on where I thought we would be for the budget so far this year. Questions on that?
Board members, any questions? All clear? Yes, Ms. Lancaster?
I just want to thank Mr. Penn for the monthly financial committee meetings, because it does help to have that and then come to the meetings at night. So we appreciate you doing the extra work for those meetings.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, we are moving into the next section of our agenda, which is Items for Consent or Action, and Mr. Penn is going to take the first item, 6.01, which is our budget amendment number one.
All right. So at the last board meeting in October, you adopted a budget, and as I mentioned at that time, we expected to have a series of monthly amendments that come out after that. Some of that is because of additional state funds that have dropped to us, which is the case here. If we move things of significance in between program codes, we make that as part of our budget amendment. So you'll see here, we actually, and this is a little bit confusing, and I apologize for this, and I'll try to state it as succinctly as I did last Thursday. We did receive additional funding to the tune of about $1.7 million, but the fact that we had to create starter budgets in two of our PRCs for international faculty and for the restart schools means that it looks like it was a decrease of about $700,000 in state for the month. But that is an accounting exercise more than it is an actual, what did we receive during the month. In our local funds, we recorded two minor budgetary transfers that netted to zero, so it had no impact at all on the overall local budget. In our federal funds, which is Fund III, we recorded funding that we received for the McKenney-Vento Homeless Assistance Grant to the tune of $90,000. In our special revenue grant, which is Fund VIII, we received, we recorded an increase of $114,000 that includes short-term assignments for the second semester at Cabarrus Virtual Academy. We tend to budget those on a semester basis, based on the anticipated enrollment that we'd have at CVA for the second semester. We also received two minor grants, $10,000 in support of our Mandarin programs, and $5,000 from the Corning Corporation for our vex robotics program. When you work through all of that across all the different funds, it looks like a decrease of $511,000 for the accounting changes that I made at the outset of the conversation, but our overall budget now reflects $536,000, $536,000,964 is where we stand right now. And I do expect that amount will grow, as we see some additional PRCs drop from the state that have not dropped yet. And certainly, if we actually get a state budget, we should see that amount go up as well, to reflect any kind of raises that are embedded in the legislation that comes forward. Questions on the amendment?
Board members, any questions about that? Yes, Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. I couldn't go to the Finance Committee, so I don't know if you covered this then. So again, a budget is a forecast. Where are we at when it comes to our homeless population as far as... Normally, from what I understand, what we receive from the federal government and those funds doesn't cover the actual expenses that we have. So $90,000 looks nice, but realistically, is that covering our need? Okay.
No, it is not. I shouldn't shake my hand on camera, if nobody hears it, but I'm right. So no, it is not. And we augment that through some of our additional EC funding that we receive. There is an additional piece of the Title I funding. This is a small piece of what we get for that. There's also uncertain years of Transportation Assistance Grant that comes through. We have not seen that yet, and we're waiting to see if there is going to be one. But that doesn't mean that we don't meet the need, right? You meet the need first, and you figure out how to pay for it second, and I hate saying it that way, but that's the truism of what we deal with.
Anyone else? Next to the podium, we'll have Mr. Carl Sane. He is going to talk to us about the Arctic Wolf Cybersecurity Renewal.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Dr. Kopicki, members of the board. This first presentation is our Arctic Wolf Cybersecurity Contract. We have budgeted this into our budget for this fiscal year, so this is a budgeted expense. And I would like to share a couple of different options that we came across. So the goal here is to renew our district-wide cybersecurity protection with Arctic Wolf Managed Detection and Response. This provides continuous 24/7 network and endpoint monitoring. This includes real-time threat detection, analysis, and response through Arctic Wolf's U.S. Security Operations Center. And then we received, we procured quotes from CDWG, SHI, and Arctic Wolf Direct. As you all are aware, this is a vital component to keep our network safe. This is required for insurance, and our network receives thousands of threats on a daily basis that Arctic Wolf helps to keep it safe. So the background for this is obviously in a rapidly evolving environment. Cyber threats require real-time monitoring, instant response, and a 24/7 nature. We do not currently have employees that work 24/7, so it's helpful to have a software that does that for us and that is proactively monitoring our environment. Obviously, school districts continue to experiencing phishing, malware, and ransomware attempts. I believe our last board update shared that over 35,000 high risks were mitigated by Arctic Wolf that month. We have, of course, 40,000 devices in a council at any given moment that require monitoring and response, and Arctic Wolf provides 24/7 human-led threat detection that is integrated with Microsoft 365. You can see the scope and services down below. This would cover over 5,000 user accounts and 150 servers onsite. This means that they would retain information logs about our systems for 365 days. This comes with a $500,000 security operations warranty. And then we have two different options for subscriptions. One is a one-year subscription price, and one is a three-year subscription price, that I'll show you the details of in just a moment. For some background, there are seven layers of cybersecurity. This is everything from the human layer, where we train our employees and staff on best practices of cybersecurity, where we attempt phishing practices to see who falls for it, all the way down through mission-critical assets. So Arctic Wolf appears in five of these layers, or five spots within four of these layers. So this is a critical component of our cybersecurity. I referenced that we procured two different options from three different vendors. So CDWG had the lowest one-year option. You can see $254,167. If we were to purchase this directly through Arctic Wolf, it would cost $1.3 million. They also offered a three-year option. We typically expect, when we budget, an 8% increase year-over-year in software purchases. So this year, we had taken last year's funding and expected an 8% increase, which means we had budgeted $320,000 for this purchase. Their three-year options actually come at a 3% increase each year-over-year. So we would anticipate an 8% increase next year, followed by another 8% increase. By going with the three-year, we lock in at just two, 3% increases. So CDWG had the lowest one-year option. CDWG also had the lowest three-year option. The recommendation is to move forward with the three-year recommendation, so that we go ahead and lock in at this year's price plus the 3% increase, as opposed to waiting for an 8% increase. We know we're going to have to have cybersecurity insurance for, I'm sorry, cybersecurity coverage for the next two years anyways. We know this is something that we're going to budget for, so we might as well go ahead and lock in at the more reasonable price. So the total cost would be $785,651.64. We would just obviously pay this year's one-year price of $254,167. Any questions about this proposal?
Board members, any questions on the cybersecurity contract? Yes, Ms. Escobar?
Oh, Sam.
Oh, Ms. Sam, sorry.
So if we go with the three-year option, it's an annual drawdown kind of thing?
It is. This year is 254,000. I believe next year was a sliding, a 3% increase.
Right. But it's a three-year commitment, but not a three-year payment?
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Escobar?
So just to clarify what we're voting on or what we're deciding is so... Because here, it just has just the one-year dollar amount on this. So is it two decisions that we have to do for this, or stick on the consent?
So for this year, we would, if we go with the three-year, our commitment is $254,167. I would prefer to go ahead and sign the three-year commitment with Arctic Wolf, so that we can lock in a lower year-two and year-three cost than what we otherwise expect.
Okay. So that number that's on the agenda is what we would have to pay first year, period?
That's exactly right.
And then you're asking us to lock in the three years?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Ms. Lancaster?
So the positive is you get a better price.
That's exactly right.
Are there any negatives to a three-year commitment?
I guess hypothetically, if we were to wait a year and prices were not to increase at all, then there's a chance that we could get the exact same price next year or something lower. We have heard from vendors that Arctic Wolf is expecting to increase their prices by 8% next year. Obviously, I can't predict the future. We always anticipate an 8% increase in software, so being, going ahead and having a 3% guarantee each of the next two years seemed like the more prudent choice.
Yeah, prices normally don't go down, right?
I would agree. I would agree.
Anybody else? Yes?
Well, to Pam's question, are there two, is there two issues here? One, we vote to make a three-year, and then one, we vote for the budget, or is it all one? Is one? Okay.
It was actually, I don't know if you caught it, it's the same price either way. So yeah, if you could make one vote for the three-year commitment, it would be ideal.
And we did vote on this last year, so this is a change if we go with the three.
That's exactly right.
All right. So I did make a mistake on the last one. I needed to ask you guys if you wanted this on action or consent. So let's start with this one, since we're here. The board, do you want this on action, or can we put this on consent for next week?
I can see it.
Everybody's feeling consent on that? We're good with that? All right, so this one will go on consent for next week. Then I need to ask you also about the budget report. Do you want... Sorry?
I can see it.
Everybody's feeling consent for that one as well. All right, thank you very much. And, oh, we're back with you again, Mr. Sane. So item 6.03 is capital funds for the paging project.
Good evening again, Dr. Kopicki and members of the board. This recommendation is for the Capital Paging Project. We were awarded $800,000 in paging and capital funds this year, and this presentation provides an overview of our proposal. So right now, we have paging systems across all of our schools that are outdated. Essentially, these operate on card systems. They are analog systems, and those cards are incredibly pricey to maintain or to... They are analog systems, and those cards are incredibly pricey to maintain or to replace as they go bad. So, most systems are moving to a digital system. What this proposal would do is instead of ripping out the current paging across what we had originally proposed was about eight schools, rip out all of the paging in eight schools, but we were going to have to do this every year for the next five years. This proposal actually replaces the brains, what's called the head-end systems of the paging system. It moves it to a digital device, and we're able to actually replace 15 schools, which means we would be able to work through all of our schools ideally in a three-year process instead of a five-year process. This would modernize our communication infrastructure across all of our schools' intercom systems. Obviously, that's an incredibly important security measure and safety measure in the event of any kind of emergency situation or fire. This would replace it with a reliable Valcom IP6000 system. This would be a retrofit upgrade by replacing the head-end only at each of those 15 schools. And then again, as I referenced, the funding source was $800,000 in already-approved capital funds. Just for some background, obviously, the current paging system is outdated. Those cards are incredibly difficult and expensive to maintain or to replace. We have been told that we could probably, over the next five years, if we were replacing, we could just take the good cards and the good components and just keep using those in the older systems. But we're to the point where we needed to move forward with some change. So, I referenced before, the original capital request was $800,000, and that we would probably need to work through this over five different cycles. This new approach is actually going to be able to outfit the systems across 15 schools. So, we should be able to do this in a much more fiscally responsible manner by replacing just the head-end systems. You can see at the bottom the head-end replacement versus the full system replacement. This keeps the existing analog speakers and wiring. This achieves 95% of full system digital functionality, and then again, it saves about 50% of the cost over the full replacement. We put out an RFP for this process back in September. The quotes came in mid-October. We use an evaluation matrix that's shown there to measure the bids, including overall costs, technical sufficiency, vendor experience, and technical support. The bids that were shown are here. KNC Technologies came in with the lowest bid at $791,315.63. Not only did they have the lowest bid, but they also had the highest score across the rubrics. We have worked with a couple of these companies in the past, but KNC Technologies is also who currently works with our paging system, so we're comfortable with them as a vendor. So, they were fully compliant with the RFP specs. They're a proven district partner with experience in paging integration, and of course, they had the most competitive pricing. Does anybody have questions about this paging proposal?
All right, board members? Melanie Freeman? Oh, we're going back this way again?
So, we're budgeted $800,000, so there's really only one vendor within that budget, right?
We actually bid this out as 15 separate sites, so we could go with one of the other bids, but we would just be able to do less sites.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that really only one vendor came in under our budget.
That's right. One vendor allowed us to do all 15 sites.
Right, right.
Ms. Freeman?
I noticed when I looked through the paging proposal, there was a list of things that were not included. What is the likelihood of those things that are not included being added to the bill as they go through?
That's a great question. I did not anticipate that question, to be honest. The vendor, KNC Technologies, is currently the same vendor that we use for our paging systems. So, they're the vendor that we've used in the most recent schools that have just been built, so we use this vendor for our Brown McAllister, for instance. So, we feel confident in what was provided within the scope. I can ask my team to give some more information on that exact question and bring that back next week if you would like.
Yes, we're already at the top of what was approved, so if any of those items were to push it up, we would have already approved. I know there's parts and things like that, that you don't anticipate until you get in there, so that was what I was asking. There was a long list of things that were not included.
Sure. So, obviously, we're not... So, the installation and labor is covered at a full warranty up to one year, and then all of the parts are warranted by the manufacturer. To be honest, I cannot recall all the list of items in that quote that were not included. We are not replacing all of the wiring and intercom systems in each of the classrooms. We are only replacing the head-end system. Kind of think of it as the brains in the system that our staff will actually interface with. So, I'll go back and get the details on that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. Looking at the 15 schools, I was just wondering what was the logic behind picking those 15 schools? And then the second question I had, which you sort of answered already in one of your responses, was our new schools... Not all 44 schools need this, right? Because we have, like, I'm guessing, two or three schools that are digital?
That's right. If I'm not mistaken, Roberta Road... I'm sorry, Wes Cabares does still have the old analog system, but our Brown McAllister, for instance, has come on with this new system. So, we will not need to replace our Brown McAllister. Obviously, it's a year old. So, we would not need to go through all 44 schools. Obviously, we're in the process of construction with two sites right now. Obviously, those would not be included either.
And the logic of the 15?
We're going to need to work through all of the schools, so if... We went through... The team chose sites that had the most difficulties and the sites that needed the most support. Cabinet was at a school site earlier this school year, and during our meeting, their intercom system was down. That school made the list. So, it's literally just the sites that need the most support from an intercom system perspective.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Lancaster?
Well, those of us that have worked in a school, you know that the intercom system is the lifeline of the schools, so to have a good operating one is not only a security risk, but just is necessary, so...
Our systems are currently aging, and they're also somewhat limited. There are a lot of new... I hate to say bells and whistles, but a digital system allows a lot more functionality than the old analog systems. So, this provides some additional options that our schools currently do not have.
All right, board, if there are any other questions, how do you feel? You want this on consent or action?
Consent. I would like action because I'd like some answers for those questions. If we can do that.
No problem. We'll put that one on action.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, we are seeing Dr. Bowers and Ms. Reeves. This is item 6.04, School Improvement Plans for Low-Performing Schools.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapiki. It is certainly our pleasure to stand before you tonight to bring this year's school performance, our School Improvement Plans for our low-performing schools, to you for your approval. If you'll think, this has been a sort of an iterative process for the last several months. School improvement planning, as you know, is something that's continuous, it is ongoing, and it is cyclical. So, work never stops. Certainly, we are always looking for ways to continually improve. But part of this each and every year is that when we have schools that are identified as low-performing schools, statutorily, we're obligated to be able to bring before you what is going to be that plan of support, and then certainly, what would those plans be for those schools that have received that designation? So, at the outset here, we look at a blank screen. There we go. We're working towards it now. All right. And it just went away. There we go. So, if you think through this, one of the things that we've couched much of this work in is what are those district-aligned priorities that we've established for each of our schools? Alignment is certainly key to continuous school improvement. And if you'll recall, throughout the school improvement process, we'd identified what were going to be those target areas for this upcoming school year, focused exclusively from an academic standpoint on those foundational literacy pieces, really target some of our math supports when we look at this from a standpoint of our ninth-grade math. How can we certainly improve our proficiency with our ACT and our ACT work keys? And then also, too, eighth-grade math proficiency as well. So, when we actually look at these from a district standpoint, we're able to align our resources to best support schools.
So, we've shared this information with you previously, but one of the things that we are really intentional about is using data decision rules to be able to justify and be able to deploy district-level support in our specific schools. So, we know that not all of our schools need the same thing. And so, when we're talking about tiered support, this specifically comes into play when we're talking about schools that receive low-performing schools designation status. Those are the schools that would typically land in our Tier III or intensive interventions, meaning we provide more consistent and frequent support, not only in deployment of resources, but also from our specialists in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, providing tailored professional development in tandem with the school-level leadership, as well as having more frequent walkthroughs in the schools, as well as data conversations with the principals around their benchmark data to be able to provision really quality supports for that school that are going to intentionally move the needle forward so that ideally, those schools are shifting from Tier III to eventually Tier I, which is what our goal is.
So, with our low-performing schools, what becomes somewhat differentiated is the fact that there are certain elements that are included within their school improvement plans that might not necessarily be reflective of other schools across the district. So, statutorily, if we review these, is that we, within the 30 days of the initial identification of a low-performing status, there are a set of key steps that must be followed for us as a district to ensure that we're providing our community, and certainly with our schools, with the resources and support that is needed to continue to drive the continuous improvement model. You see these identified here, and certainly each of these steps we've been able to accomplish, which then leads us for the formal presentation of the plans to you tonight.
So, as a part of this specific district provision support, we want to intentionally outline key evidence-based strategies to be able to support schools in their turnaround efforts around academic performance. And so, as you can see here, these are some of the intentional action items that the district is committed to in terms of supporting that building-level leader. And a lot of this has to do with specifically being in the schools, completing walkthroughs, and having really high-quality conversations with those building-level leaders, not only in provisioning professional development, but in a lot of instances, it's actually going out into the professional learning communities of the teachers, being able to help support them in internalization of the curricular resources, the data, whether it's a benchmark data or end-of-unit assessment data that they may be discussing, and how they're shifting their practices in terms of classroom instruction. And then, of course, having really key conversations around if there are specific subgroups of students that we are not moving, what do we need to do, and what professional development or evidence-based research and strategies do we need to be deploying into the school to be able to support for all students?
So, one may ask, what specifically is included in the plan itself? And so, the next two slides will illustrate that for you. Within NCSTAR, which is our planning tool, our planning instrument for school improvement, there are these items that are referred to as indicators. Indicators are simply best practices. And within each best practice, we have a set of action steps that also would accompany said practice. So, on the left-hand side of this table, you'll see that specific indicator in NCSTAR, which has now been added to the school's plan. And for this one, you can see that indicator would be A103. The number doesn't really mean much. That's why we've provided some of the verbiage there to help you to truly understand what does that look like when indeed this is implemented at the school level. The right-hand side gives you the descriptions, excuse me, and the actions. And those are the items to which now all of a sudden have been added to the plan to say that we, as a school, shall commit to doing these things.
Additionally, one of the things that we're really proud of, and I think really moves the needle for schools, is that when we're intentionally talking about goal-setting, it's not just what is in their school improvement plan, but we understand that the accountability model in our schools is comprehensive. And so, what we intentionally do is provision schools with internal goals or goalposts, so to speak, in terms of making sure that whatever data measure they're going after is going to be a data measure that's going to move them off of the low-performing list. And so, there is an achievement level that we are looking for, and we are looking for that in every grade level and in every tested area, because ultimately, that ends up in their school performance grade. We obviously cannot calculate growth, which is 20% of what schools are evaluated on as it relates to the low-performing schools designation status. However, what we do know is where their achievement level will land, and because of the district benchmarks that we use, we are able to collect projected benchmark proficiency data to be able to really drive and inform a pulse check or a progress monitor throughout the year to know where schools are trending as it relates to that goal. And so, we do that very intentionally in tandem with the school-level leadership to be able to have some really high-quality dialogue around where are we seeing we're hitting the growth point, or we're on track to meeting the progress to exit out of the low-performing school status, and where are their PLCs or specific grade levels or content areas that may need additional support throughout the year, so that we're not waiting for autopsy data at the end of the year to look at where a school is at. We know each time a student takes a benchmark exam exactly where that school needs to be and what district support we can provision.
So, one of the unique aspects of the low-performing school model is that statutorily, districts are to provide stakeholders a chance to provide feedback on the school's plans. So, the plans must be shared with the community to which they serve. So, we were able to effort that this year by sending out an actual invitation to participate in a feedback form for each of the schools that had been identified. So, that survey was available from October 7th through November 2nd. It closed yesterday. And during that window, we able to receive about six responses from our community members that actually weighed in on a variety of factors with the schools and made some comments and feedback. The feedback was then shared with the schools themselves, so the schools could actually take that, share it with their leadership teams, and be able to review that internally for any considerations moving forward. And so, we've just kind of... This slide just updates that, and it shows you a little bit of the, sort of the data that we've been able to extract from that and then share back out with the schools. So, this leads us to the timeline. So, again, as I said, this has really been an iterative process and certainly ongoing. If you recall, back in October, we were able to bring before the board their actual school improvement plans for all schools. Well, due to the release of the low-performing school designations, we also shared the plans for the schools tonight that you're receiving as well. Once the designations then were made available and became official on October 2nd, then the process began to amend those plans and certainly include some of the provisions that we've shared with you here tonight. And you can see this presentation and the presentation for the approval of plans is here for you for your consideration tonight. We would ask for the approval next week, which then would allow us to be well in advance of the December 1 reporting timeline for the plans to be submitted to the state of North Carolina. So, with that, we'll certainly pause for any questions you might have.
All right, board, do we have any questions? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you, and thank you for the plans. It's interesting to go through them and see what each school is going to address specifically. My question is related to that community engagement. I recognize that, you know, if people don't want to participate, they don't participate. That's fine. But for the six, for that feedback for the six, was that related to one school or all the schools? Because all the schools were in the same engagement.
Yes, ma'am. So, we got feedback on three schools.
Okay.
There were five schools that had received the low-performing schools designation. In of the three that received the feedback, that feedback was forwarded directly to the principal themselves. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to piggyback off what Pam just said. So, we only got six responses, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm wondering, and thank you, because this is a lot of work. I told you I'm a school improvement team chair, and I know a lot more work goes into this than you think. But I wondered in the future, if there's any other way we could get community feedback other than... Is it Parents Square, you said?
Yes, ma'am, it is. That's a great question. And I think, given the low number of responses, that's certainly something we can take and review and say, how better can we push this out, communicate with our families, and make this available to them? And certainly, too, maybe demystify some of the things associated as well, because people, just when they look at the plan, the plans are daunting. If you haven't done the work, and they can be somewhat quite immersive. You can get lost in it. So, I think that's the piece we'll take away and say, how can we be better partners in this process as well?
Thank you for all your work you've done.
Any other questions over here? All right, then. Do you want to see this on action or agenda for next week? Or action or consent? Everybody's okay with consent? All right, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to item 6.05, Policies for First Read, and Dr. Sandy Ward is coming to the podium. Doing very well. Is your mic on?
Doing good tonight. All right. All right, so for this month, we have seven policies that we're bringing forth for you on a first reading. I have not received any questions, so I will go through the review. Okay? All right, the first... All right, the first policy we're looking at is Policy 4120, domicile of residence. And this is from the Summer 2025 Special Update. All of our policies tonight will be from the Summer 25 Special Update. And this one adds a new statutory requirement in Section D regarding the enrollment of children of military families. And what this does is it makes the enrollment process easier. So if someone was stationed in a different state, they can remotely do the enrollment paperwork and things of that nature, and make the process just easier for our families, especially those who serve us. So that's what we're looking at there. Any questions? All right. The next one is 7820 Personnel Files. This one updates the description in subsection F1 of public information and employee personnel files in accordance with the new state law. It also creates a new section G about central office employees that must be posted online. There's a new law out there that all the positions in central office need to be recorded, put it out on the website, by title, by position, pay, and all of those different things. And we have complied with that. That was due, I think, in August. So on our website, we have already done that. All right, next one is 6125 Administering Medicines to Students, also from Summer 25. And this one, it keeps the body of the policy intact. It's changing epinephrine auto-injector device to epinephrine delivery system in order to include epinephrine nasal sprays. So just a new way of delivering medicine. But substantially, the policy is still the same. Any questions? All right. 6340 Transportation Services and Vehicle Contracts. This references the criminal history check that is required in Policy 7100 Recruiting and Selection of Personnel. This one was strongly recommended, but was definitely adopted by our team. And this one states that anybody that we use outside of Cabarrus County Schools, if we are contracting with someone else, they are responsible for conducting the background checks on those workers, so that we know anyone who's transporting CCS kids should be transporting CCS kids and are safe. Any questions? All right, the next one. 5023, 6127, 7266, Prevention and Emergency Response to Severe Allergic Reactions. Once again, this mirrors the changes in 6125, changing epinephrine auto-injector device to epinephrine delivery system. So the body of that policy will remain the same, and then those changes will apply. All right, getting down to 1310, 4002, Parental Involvement. You've seen this one probably seven times in the last two years. Adds in language in Section D for the new state law regarding field trips. We talked about this last time. And what we're doing here is we are saying that students of the same gender will be able to share rooms unless they're family members. And then if there are any other changes or any other variables, the superintendent or his designee will need to approve. Questions, comments? And that also pertains to 3320, same change with school trips. So that is the first reading for November.
All right, we went through those really quickly. Does anybody here have any questions about any of those? Make sure. You want all of these on consent or any of them on action? All right, those will go on consent, and we will keep you for another item. We're moving on to Item 6.06, which is Policies for Approval on Second Read. And if you don't mind, just for the sake of people who are new to this process, can you explain first read and second read and kind of what we go through in order to change a policy?
Sure, absolutely. So I've explained this a lot. When the PLS sends us down policies for the change, that means that there has been a change in state law, or there has been a change in best practice. And so the North Carolina School Board Association's their entire attorney team, they get together and look at all the policies and make sure that we are in compliance. And so once we bring them to my team, our team, we meet once a month as an internal policy team, sorry. And once we do that, we look at the recommendations from NCSBA, and we decide on things that we want to accept. We bring them on to the Board for a first reading, and then the Board is allowed to obviously ask us questions, get more clarity. Sometimes you do your own homework, which is amazing, that you're keeping up with your own policies. And then we take it back. And then before it is agreed upon, Vice Chair explained earlier, it either goes on consent or action, and so we bring it up for a second read. So last month, there were no questions. So we're going to bring this set of policies back from October up for a second reading. You ready? All right.
Thank you so much.
Sure. October, second read. 7340 Employee Dress and Appearance had a technical minor edit. We updated legal references, which was recommended, and we took the recommendation. 9210 Care and Maintenance of Grounds and Outdoor Equipment, another technical edit. Those just means that either a cross-reference or a legal reference was updated. So we want to make sure that we are in compliance and we have the correct updates. 2302 Remote Participation in Board Meetings. This was from Spring 2025. It clarifies that votes in a remote meeting during a state-declared emergency will be taken by roll call. All right? And that was required. As is 2342 Voting Methods. Clarifies that votes in a remote meeting during a state-declared emergency will be taken by roll call. And we updated the legal references there. 3225, 4312, 7320 Technology Responsible Use. It adds some language in subsection B1. It talks about the E-rate and who has access and who should have access to our technology devices and hotspots and Wi-Fi, which should only be our students and our staff. 1310, we already talked about that when we brought this back for a second read, which is why you just heard them again. So that is the field trip, sleeping quarters, and then school trips, same thing. And then down at the bottom, we did look at discretionary admission. This was a district request. And for a district request, we have our leadership team is, we look at how policies are being played out in the schools. And if they see that there is a conflict, or things are not being interpreted the same way, they bring it up to the policy team, and we're kind of trying to get everyone on the same page. So a district request here. Discretionary Admission revised to specifically call out that only special circumstances will allow out-of-district enrollments. And also, it removes Section B foreign exchange students to create a standalone policy. Whereas Policy 4041, nope, 4140, we are definitely adopting a standalone policy for foreign exchange students. So those are the things that we did back in October. Now up for a second reading.
All right, Board, again, this is for second read. So if you decide to approve these next week, these changes will be made to the policy manual. Are you guys comfortable with this on consent or for action for next week? Consent all the way around. That one will go on consent for next week. Thank you very much, Dr. Ward.
Thank you.
All right, I think this is our last item under our regular agenda. Yep. And it is Item Number 6.07, Architect Recommendation for Northwest Elementary School with Mr. Brian Cohn.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Kapiki. So the solicitation process to remain compliant with North Carolina General Statute 143-6431, which is the procurement of architectural engineering and surveying services, allows us to issue a multi-year issuance for requests for qualification for professional services. Cabarrus County Schools and the Department of Construction, in conjunction with the Facilities and Maintenance Department, issued this RFQ in June of 2024. The Master Architectural Services RFQ looks to procure turnkey design services for a wide range of capital needs, including new construction, renovations, and re-roofing projects. These projects carry construction budgets up to $55 million for capital projects and up to $5 million for the re-roofing projects. This RFQ was not intended to be tied to a single project, but was there to pre-qualify firms for a potential group of projects that fell within that defined timeframe on the RFQ. Multiple submissions were received and reviewed as a part of the qualification-based selection process. And given our intent to utilize an existing prototype design for the Northwest Area Elementary School project, we are recommending the selection of Yates-Crexburg-Hughes Architects of Concord, North Carolina. Yates-Crexburg-Hughes previously designed two elementary schools using the same prototype design, Arbrown-McCallister STEM Elementary and the current in-progress Coltrum Web STEM Elementary. This will allow the district to capitalize on design efficiencies, reduce timelines, and cost savings associated by utilizing this prototype design. Once approved, we will begin a fee and contract negotiation with YCH and plan to bring that agreement and contract back before this Board at the December meeting. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Board members, do we have any questions? None on this side, over here? Yes, Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. So we went into this back in June of 2024. This is for three years?
It is for three years, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It actually goes into effect at the start of the new school year. So July 1 was when they go into effect, July 1 of 2024.
Got it. And so as a Board, tonight, we are, this vote would say, yes, you can design the next elementary school using the same thing that we, the design we already used?
The vote tonight allows me to begin negotiating contracts with YCH Architects. There's not a dollar value attached to this. What I'm making the recommendation on is that we begin those negotiations with YCH because of the efficiencies that we see with the prototype design and using that same concept that we did for Arbrown and Coltrum Web.
Can you also talk about the timeline or the time crunch that we're under?
Yeah, so in order to maximize on the efficiencies of a prototype design and utilizing YCH, a traditional process for designing a school, programming it, schematic design, and all the phases you go through takes about nine months. Assuming that we went through that process and we didn't get this started until after the first year, that puts us into September or October of next year, which then starts jeopardizing the timeline once again for opening this school in 2028, when we've identified it to open. We're going to gain three months of time by utilizing this prototype design, because we don't have to go through program, and we don't have to go through schematic design. We essentially have design development drawings in place and are ready to begin drawing. So you gain three months' worth of time on the design timeline for this project. There's also efficiency in the financial side of things, in that we saved almost 35% on the value of the design contract for Coltrum Web versus what we did on Arbrown, because we went through that same design process and used that prototype. So there's a savings to the taxpayer to go through this. There's a savings on the time. It maximizes on the efficiencies of using it and allows us to get the school open when we need to.
Any other questions on this side? Over here, Ms. Lancaster?
So last week, you answered a lot of questions I had. We had a great conversation. So, you know, for years, people have said, why don't we normally, or why don't we usually just rebuild the same schools over and over again? So what was your answer to that when we were talking about that the other day? Just the topography and...?
Yeah, traditionally, you know, no two pieces of land are going to lay the same. And depending on what the grade changes of a piece of property versus, you know, how wide it is, or how narrow it is, or what kind of road frontage you have, there are challenges that impact you on being able to prototype a school and build it from one site to the other. We've been very fortunate in Arbrown and in Coltrum Web that the design we've arrived at is a very compact design of the footprint, so that we don't take up a lot of space. And what we need is develop a land to put this facility on it. And so that's why it's been advantageous for us to consider reusing it as a prototype. There have been tweaks here and there. We had to tweak it a little bit for Coltrum Web to fit the geometry, but it also affords us the ability to change the program on it very easily, to where we can add classrooms on, and we can increase that capacity if we feel the need to. A lot of schools that don't follow that simple design, you don't have that ability to do it, so.
Any other questions? So you said you'd be able to add capacity to this design?
We have the ability, yes, to add classroom spaces in a very systematic, simple form to where it doesn't jeopardize the rest of the program and design of the school.
Okay. Would that mess up the core features of the school, the lunch?
It does not. So if we increase the capacity enough, we're also able to increase its core capacities in a manner that it doesn't affect the design either. Again, it's a lot of big boxes put together that give us the ability to maximize on the spaces that we need to.
Any other questions, y'all? Nope. All right. So how are you feeling about this one, for action or consent? I think I'm going to ask for this to be on action, just in part because Rob's not here.
Okay.
I'd like to have an opportunity to ask questions this week.
Sure.
And maybe follow up next week, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that wraps up our regular agenda. At this point, we need to go into closed session, and so I will read this. I need a motion that the Board convene in closed session to prevent the disclosure of information as privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of the state or of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes pursuant to the General Statute 143 318.11A1, to consult with the attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 1.3-318.11A3, including cases involving Catherine Gullidge as guardian ad litem for AC, Carol Kendrick, Sandra Ruth Moore individually as guardian ad litem for EM at all, Russell John Gregory individually as a guardian ad litem for DJG at all, Miller individually on behalf of CM, and Otis Bonds, and to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase option or lease pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to the same General statute. Can I get a motion? Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. We will take a short recess.